Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for a Friday afternoon at 3:00 P. M. What do you say we rock up and rock and roll here? Today is May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's three P. M. This is a city council workshop meeting. We'll begin with roll call, please.
Mayor, good.
Present.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gamboji is not here. Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Thank you.
City Clerk, would you like to read our agenda item?
Presentation and discussion regarding the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget workshop.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and council, it's my privilege to be here at three P. M. on a Friday afternoon to discuss budget. Nowhere else I'd rather be.
Very sad to hear.
Yeah. It's a sad life, but it's my life. Just wanted to start by going over the budget process. As council, remember, there was a strategic planning retreat December third and fourth, which was basically the kickoff where council set the parameters for the budget as we went in. And the mid-year report on February twenty-fifth, where we discussed the challenges in the upcoming budget, the schedule that we were looking at, and the approach that we were taking where we were gonna, where we provide the budget to you three weeks in advance to look at the detail. And then this meeting is more of a high-level overview of how it achieves the council's strategic plan. Then through January, February, and March, departments submitted all their requests and all the paperwork related to that. And then through the end of March, through April eleventh, the city manager and budget staff met with each of the departments. We worked through all the proposals. We trimmed them down. A lot of them didn't make it to the final budget because, of course, there are limited resources. And today, we have the annual council budget workshop. And the budget was sent to council on April twenty-fourth. It's about three weeks ago in detail. And then the capital plan was also sent in detail. Then the following, we will have tentative consideration of the budget on June tenth and final consideration on June twenty-fourth. And I skipped a slide just trying to get you out of here, Quirky. Looking at the presentation approach, as I said, we're going to focus on initiative service levels and how it achieves the strategic plan. We're not going to go painfully line item by line item through a two-hundred-page deck to talk about things. The city manager's proposed budget is published on the OpenGov platform, which you've all had three weeks to play with. I wanted just to take this opportunity to click out to our website really quick. This is the City of Prescott website, prescott-az.gov. Under the government tab, you will see the data transparency tab. And under the data transparency tab, you'll see the public safety initiative, public information. Lars Johnson, who is doing part of this presentation, will go over that at that time. You have our current budget reports, and this is what was sent to council. These three items, which include the budget, city manager's proposed budget, looking at that. It's an overview of the budget, allowing council or the public, either one, to drill down into the individual funds to get the details, get detailed information. Like here, Streets shows revenue, expenses, shows the detail. It has a write-up on fees and structures, a lot of detail on these. And then there's also a department, department plan, where you can look at any individual department, city council, any of them, and see what their mission is and their services and accomplishments and all that. So that is out there. That was the budget you had to work through. In addition, you had the five-year capital plan, which, again, Mr. Johnson will go over a little bit later, and the public safety initiative item. So those were out there on the web. They're out there on the web now to look at. We are also have a financial transparency page, which is currently live. We are not going to go into it today because it could take a lot of time. And we needed more time to walk council through how to use it as well as the public. So on June tenth workshop, the one o'clock workshop, we have a section to be able to go through that and show council and the public how that works. That gives you real-time information on all of our expenditures, all of our revenues, all those type of things. It's really neat. Feel free to play with it, but we'll have that training on June tenth. So with that, if I'd hit the right key. So that is all out there. And again, been out there for three weeks. I know you guys have been using it to review the budget and get questions answered, get more questions made. As council and the staff and the public do that, if they do have questions that they just can't find something they don't understand, feel free to contact our office. Catherine's email address is there, her phone number's there. We'll set up an appointment. People can come in. We'll walk them through it. We'll answer their questions. We'll, you know, we're about getting this information out to the public. So it is very important to us. So as we start looking at how the budget was formed, you have to look at the local, the state, and the national economy. There are some areas of concern. I don't know if you guys watch the news or not, but there's some issue with tariffs. There's issue with concerns of downturn in the economy, slowdown. We take all those things into account. We look at the numbers that we're getting on our tax receipts, which we will be looking at on the next slide, to do our revenue forecasts. So our revenue forecasts are, we use three-year averaging. We use information we know beyond just three-year averaging. Residential rentals goes away. We have to take that into our forecast. We do other things. We use a conservative approach. Even with our conservative approach, we're not really expecting a downturn. We're just expecting slower growth than the prior year. So that's what's included in this budget as we weigh revenue against expenditures to prepare this city manager budget for your consideration. We, beyond that, having the conservative approach, we also monitor revenues monthly. We will bring mid-year adjustments if necessary. We'll freeze capital projects if there's significant downturns. We've seen a few of those over the last thirty-nine years of me doing this. We've seen a few significant downturns, whether it was nine eleven, which had a pretty significant impact on the local economy, or the oh-eight recession, or any of the other things. And we just make adjustments mid-year, freeze projects, and then free them up as revenues improve or don't, they go to the next year. And again, this budget maintains all the prudent financial reserves that comply with council policy. Those are all in the, in this budget that you're considering today, what we're studying today. Looking at local taxes, this is a little more detailed analysis than I give council monthly, and it's grouped a little differently because I wanted to talk about a few of the areas. So we have retail sales. We have both physical and online retail sales. They are the, you know, they're the same type of sales, just a different means of delivery. And again, we've finally gotten the state through Wayfair to get the tax code to work. Tried for years, they had to wait for the lawsuit. We look at the retail sales, which is by far our biggest category. At, through March, it's a hundred, one billion, one hundred and ten million dollars of taxable activity there. And it's basically flat. But we're seeing an uptick in online sales. If we consider the two together, we're almost one percent gain, which is good. It's our highest category, at least it is positive. We look at the rental, which is on the report I sent. That's made up of the three categories I have kind of grouped next. You can see residential rental is down thirty percent. Anybody know why? Anybody know why? No. It's because the state of Arizona doesn't think cities need money to provide services, so they decided to make residential rentals non-taxable for us. We really appreciate that. Restaurant bars and hotel motel are both down, about three percent, two percent, and three point three eight. Just a change in the local market, tourism, uncertainty in economy. People aren't coming, people aren't spending. You know, we see that out there. Then the other categories are below. As you can see, the total is essentially flat from year to year. Why is it essentially flat? It's essentially flat mainly because the state of Arizona took away residential rental. If we factor residential rental out of this, we're actually, we'd be up one point seven percent. But because of that loss, we're down pretty significant. And again, economic cycles, we consider when we do these projections. We use a three-year averaging and for our projection out for the end of twenty-five as well as a projection for twenty-six. So we have to do eighteen months when we do these projections. The residential rental, of course, it was one point one million in the general fund and one point one in Streets Fund. That was half in twenty-five and half in twenty-six, or twenty-five, and half in twenty-four and half in twenty-five. The other concerns, of course, are food tax, which would be totally devastating for the city and many other cities. We'd be looking at nine million dollar loss across our revenue stream, six of that in the general fund and three of that in the Streets Fund. The, as I mentioned, through the meetings with the departments, maintaining a balanced budget, which is our goal, should be everybody's goal, did require some decisions to be made that the manager made to achieve the strategic plan and put off things that not necessarily achieved the strategic plan. So there was decisions and challenges that need to be made through a lot of our funds. Through a lot of our funds. Wanted to talk a little bit about state shared revenues because that's another challenge we have with the state legislature. This is the urban revenue sharing, URS. It's actually our share of state income tax. It's based on eighteen percent, and that went from fifteen to eighteen. In two thousand and one, the state legislature decided to not use a progressive tax rate. They decided to go to a flat tax rate effective in two thousand and twenty-three. So that obviously, since we were a percentage of what was collected, that would lower our revenues significantly. The legislature at that time was more friendly to cities and realized that we needed those revenues to provide services. So legislators at the time would not vote for the tax reduction unless the percentage for cities went from fifteen percent to eighteen percent. So that, that was implemented along with it. We thank all those legislatures who probably are no longer there, apparently, based on the last year. But as it goes, urban revenue sharing is based on two years, history from two years ago, on a fiscal year basis, and of course, income taxes on a tax year basis. So that's why you can see the bump up in twenty-four, which was a temporary bump up with that new eighteen percent rate. Even though the tax rate has gone down, it was still based on the twenty-two tax collection. And then another half of it went away in twenty-five. But as you see from before, in twenty-three on out, as we project out to thirty-two, you know, it kept us pretty, it kept us from being harmed by that decision that they made, which we appreciate. It gives us our ability to do it. I bring it up just to make sure everybody's aware of it because, again, as the budgets get tied to the state, the state legislators who aren't that friendly to cities are going to start saying, why is this eighteen instead of the required fifteen percent? And we'll have to continue to defend that. But looking at state shared revenues overall, we get four state shared revenues. We get the income tax, the URS. We get a portion of the state sales tax. And we get the portion of the vehicle license tax as well as the gas tax for Streets operations. These are significant revenues. They make up, before, when you consider the available general sales tax in general fund, they make up forty-one percent of our revenues. That's just a few percentage less than our local sales tax. They're very important. They're tied to population. If we look, every citizen that is a permanent citizen, we get five hundred and forty-five dollars a year for. For a family, two point one, according to the census fact-finder, that's one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars a year. I don't know if you, if you, if you decide to allow a hundred-unit apartment building, that's pretty significant numbers. That's a hundred thousand a year, a hundred and fifteen thousand a year of additional revenue in the general fund. We have to provide services. Not only that, these revenues are spread out basically on our population compared to all the other cities in the state population. And Prescott grows a lot slower than most of the other cities. So as long, you know, that also is going to start reducing these and the availability of these and the need for them in the general fund is not going to reduce by that amount. So it is important to remember that there is benefit to residential development. It does bring in revenue, depending on the density of the development, as to whether that's enough to provide all the service or a portion of those services.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you. Mark, this is just for my education. Given what you just were saying, could you go back one slide to those bar charts? And there was...
Sure. Somehow, there it goes.
So the dip that we're going down in twenty-five and down twenty-six and then going back up. I'm just trying to reconcile that picture versus what you were just saying.
Okay. So in twenty-three, we got fifteen percent of the state shared income tax. And the income tax was a graduated tax rate, which had been in place since nineteen thirty-seven. I was looking for somebody who'd been around that long, probably just me. And then the flat tax was, went into effect on, in twenty twenty-three. So our revenue distribution, the twenty-three revenue distribution started in twenty-five because of the two-year lag. So we had a big bump in twenty-four, but it wasn't ongoing. We knew it wasn't ongoing. When Lars presents, Mr. Johnson presents in a few minutes, he'll be talking about recurring and non-recurring revenues and expenditures. We knew it was non-recurring. That's okay. Great to have any kind of revenues. We put them aside. We use them to catch up on capital projects, you know, another fire truck or other things that were bought with them. But we don't build operations into them. We don't add people because we know it's only a year or so. So that shows that bump because the state legislator, legislature let us go from the fifteen percent to eighteen. So we got a bump. And but as the two and a half percent tax comes in, we're back to our standard trend as if we didn't have it. Yeah. And just as clarification, state sales tax, we receive our share based on our population. We get, that pool gets twenty-five percent of all state sales tax collected across the state. The HERF is the eighteen cent gas per gallon tax you pay. And twenty-seven point five percent of that pool gets distributed based on population, part of it based on location of sale and part of it based on population as a whole. And vehicle license tax is a twenty percent.
Okay. So, so given that, the other future bars where you have estimated, you said, you know, we're not growing at the same rate as some other big cities, and we need to be cautious about that. But you're showing that we're going up. So that means the whole state economy is growing and we're going to get our share of it.
Yes. And again, these are estimates. If we, if we grow at, at a half a percent and the rest of the state grows at five, it won't be this rosy. But I don't think the differential is going to be that great between our growth and the rest of the state. And again, these estimates came from the League of Cities, you know, beyond the actuals and the estimates from, the estimates from next year did, but we also tie those out because that data is available.
Thank you.
Sure. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon. I'm Lars Johnson, Deputy Finance Director. Pleased to be with you to present the FY twenty-six budget. Someone mentioned they walked in that it's showtime. Well, think of the budget as the stage crew behind the scenes. It's not always in the spotlight, but it keeps things rolling smoothly. That's how I view the budget. So the budget before you, the proposal is balanced, which means our ongoing operations, as Mark was talking about, is funded by ongoing revenue. So we studied the detail of revenue sources to make sure that when we're balancing funds, we can continue to do that in the future with operations. That means if you look at a fund summary, you may see total expenditures exceed revenues. Well, that's because we have what's called accumulated fund balance. Over the years, we accumulate fund balance through conservative revenue estimates and underspending of the budget. We strategically fund projects with that available balance, as well as some projects are funded by grants and proceeds from debt. So on this slide, we're also showing things that impact department citywide. So each department, as you're reviewing their budgets, these will be things that impact them. One of them is, we're excited to include the prioritization of the market compensation pay plan for employees. The cost of living adjustment for next year is proposed to be two point two percent starting July one. Employees would receive that. And then in addition, a three percent, up to three percent merit based on evaluations. Other operating impacts that impact everybody is health insurance premiums this year went up seven percent for our trust. We also are seeing increased facilities needs, so we increased the cost recovery to departments by ten percent. And we're expecting that to continue over the next few years to accumulate funds to do what we need to do in our facilities. The insurance risk fund also needed additional coverage for the cost there, so that also went up. As Mark was talking about, your management team did a lot of heavy lifting and balancing the budget. So this slide summarizes the total of the requests versus what was included in this proposal for you. So a total of fourteen point seven million was requested as increases into the operating budget. We were only able to fund or propose to fund ten point one million out of that. And this recurring one-time in operations is important for us, as I mentioned. Recurring means that if a department's asking for something that's going to continue to be needed to be funded year over year, for example, personnel, we hire somebody, we expect them to stay on, as well as, you know, utility bills, things like that, that are expected to be just ratcheted up. One-time are things that are a project, such as a purchase of furniture, a certain training that's needed only for next year. So we put those in two categories when we're studying these requests. Our capital requests have also been aligned with the projected available funding. So that's also work that the management team does, is look at the funds versus the requests and if the capital budget sometimes needs to be pushed around, so things be delayed or prioritized to make sure that it can actually be accomplished. So the proposed total city budget is divided into three categories. We have operating capital and then contingency. The operating budget increase in the proposal is six point nine percent or nine point four million. You'll notice in the slide before, the operating increase increases were about ten million. The difference there is it's a lot of moving parts in a budget. There's also some reductions that happen, so it's not always additive. Also, a big portion to keep in mind of the increases here are our Public Safety Tax Initiative. That increased operations by year, from last year's revised budget, which was a mid-year revision, as you remember. That's why it's titled Revised Budget for Twenty-five. It increased operations by about two million between the two budgets for Public Safety Tax Initiative. And we'll go into that in more detail in a few slides. So why does a city need a contingency budget? That's because we're under, in the state constitution, required to have an expenditure limitation. And as a city, we've been, we've been fortunate to have the citizens pass the home rule, expenditure limit, which means what we adopt as our total budget is our maximum expenditures that are allowed. So we have a contingency to allow for some flexibility if a project or some grant comes through that we weren't anticipating. The next few slides will talk about combining all the funds together, what are our revenues and expenditures. and expenditures, and then we'll just delve into the general fund, as that's an important fund to look at in detail. So this is, again, combining all funds. Tax revenue is going up, and that's largely because of the new Public Safety Tax that was passed. That's expected to be at 22.5 million. And then the next big category you'll see going up is charges for services. So that would be things like our dispatch services. We bill partners for that, and so if they're increasing services, the charges also increase. Also, our impact fees are in this category. With the new impact fee study, we have 1.2 million increases in nonutility impact fees, 1 million in enterprise impact fees. In addition, our utility and enterprise funds, so water, wastewater, charges for services when we bill customers for the services delivered, are in this charges for services. We're expecting or projecting our revenue to increase in water by 2.2 million, wastewater by 2.5 million, and solid waste by 1.1 million. And those were the rate studies that came before council. We're ratcheting up revenues slowly to meet the demands in those enterprise funds. Overall, the operating revenues are increasing by 16%, and in total, revenues of $268 million
Mayor Protan can tell me.
Hey Lars, I wanted to find out about, so in the charges for services and the impact fees, what was the percentage of increase in that line? Was it commensurate with what we voted to raise that up, right around 80%?
Yeah, that was, right. There were significant increases. I don't have the exact percentage with me. We can get that for you.
So when you're, are you basing this on permits in the pipeline, or how are you basing that?
We, the rate study had revenue projections in it, so we pretty much follow that.
Okay.
The assumptions, we do quite a detailed study when we're doing those with the consultant. So we try to use those in our projections unless the trend is looking otherwise. So yeah, those are based on permit assumptions.
Because what, didn't we allow a two-year buffer for some of those impact fees to take place?
Right, there was a delay for, that's only if the development already was in place and had pulled a permit. They had a buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the question. Okay, we'll skip over to all funds expenditures. I'll talk about some of the increases here, but again, we're going to dive into more detail into the general fund, so I try not to duplicate by talking about those here. But the airport operations are increasing mainly because of an operating grant budget. Community development is an area where there's some reorganization happening, and we'll talk more about that, too. But that's why there's an increase here, where we're moving some areas to this department. Fire and police, obviously, we chatted about the Public Safety Tax budget, and that's what's increasing those areas. Public works is showing an increase. There were a few larger one-time operating requests for this year with some maintenance projects for the treatment plant, water tanks, and then there were supplies and utility costs that were going up in public works. They also have two new positions, as we'll talk about in a few slides. Regional communications is going up with increased software maintenance, some tools and equipment. When we're looking at operating, not expenditures, that's mainly capital, so that also has a separate section in this presentation. We'll explain those in detail in a few slides. Okay, so now we're talking about the budgeted fund balance. If you noticed, if you compared the last two slides, we had revenues of 2 points, or sorry, $268 million with expenditures of $303 million. So what's that difference? That's the net change in fund balance line here on this chart. That totals $35.7 million is expected to be funded through accumulated fund balance that the city had on, in each of these funds. There's detail below under the ending fund balance that helps understand what these balances will be used for or why we have them. One of them is the operating policy, and that's what Mark was talking about, is we have a policy for maintaining a minimum fund balance. In the general fund, that's 20% of operating revenues. That's prudent reserve, that's in the policy. The other funds is left open in the policy but meets the objective of each fund. We typically use 10% as a rule of thumb for those other funds. Then we have, most of these funds are specific programs or projects, so those balances, for example, an enterprise fund of 20 million would be left after this budget. Those are designated for the capital plans that we have in place. We do have what's called unassigned in the general fund. It's an accounting term, but basically it has more discretion than the other funds for council to look at. However, we do expect those to be utilized in future years with projects in the capital plan.
Yeah, Lars, can you give me an example of that?
Sorry, example of what?
Give me an example.
Of a future project?
Of the...
Yeah. So 19.7 million is in the general fund. Examples would be your general fund departments, such as police, fire, library, recreation services, put together a capital plan, which we can show you in a little bit, but there's large maintenance projects at the parks, there's vehicle replacements needed each year. So those are examples of things that utilize this fund balance.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
That was similar to what I was wondering, what that 19 million was. And then the other thing I was questioning is, do contingencies, is that how I might also think about that general fund?
And again, sorry to interrupt, I also wanted to point out, that's also for other things that might need to be used. The general fund is the only fund you have any latitude to use for other operations. For instance, let's just say you needed to upfront money to an enterprise fund to purchase land for some reason or another, just throwing something out there. You would need to have that capacity and that unfunded assigned balance to have...
That's why I said contingencies. That's the way I thought of it. Okay.
That's really more future contingencies. The contingent, the 10 million contingency we have in this budget is included in this year's budget, but you know, next year, if we need to do a project, as Lars said, as you look at the capital plan, you're going to see there's a big demand in the future for parks, projects, you know, we got field lights that are needing to be replaced before they fall over and things like that in future years as we move. So it's not really unassigned where, hey, let's go shopping type of thing, but it is needed for future projects.
So if we had applied for a grant that required a matching percentage, then we would put that in there so that if we got the grant, then we had the money to do the match to be able to apply it.
Exactly.
Right?
Yeah, and for future matches and things that might be coming down the road.
Thanks, Mark. And I did forget to mention the airport fund also utilizes the general fund for capital. So as you look at their capital plan, the grant matches, as the mayor mentioned, do come out of this 19 million. Okay, now we're going to switch gears and talk about the general fund a little bit in detail. This pie chart shows the operating revenues, not including, it says, less program revenues. So program means like when we're delivering service, a particular service, and we're getting paid for that service. Things like inspection fees at the community development desk, recreation services, charges for park usage, things like that are not included. So this is general taxation. How do we fund our services in the general fund? The biggest category is the 1% local privilege tax at 43%. And then next, as Mark was talking about, is our state share, state share to revenues at 38. We also have a new category here that's highlighted, the 0.95% privilege tax for dedicated public safety. So what we added here was the amount to offset the operating costs is added in this pie chart. And then we have property tax at 5%, which we'll talk about in detail what that levy looks like in a few slides. Franchise tax are taxes to utilities that are using city right-of-ways, so they're APS, Unisource, and Cable ONE. And then some other smaller type categories that have, for example, investment income, things like that. So that totals 49.3 million. Now, what are these fund is our operations. You can see the pie chart of how this splits in the general fund. Now, what we did here to get the impact these operations have on the general taxes is we netted their revenues that they generate and cost allocations that we do. You'll notice that public safety next year is expected to be around 70% of the general fund, so that's police and fire, plus the new public safety tax.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Yeah, Lars, when I was doing the pre-reading, you know, when we were out talking Prop 478 with all the public, we were talking about, you know, in previous years, including Fiscal 25, that public safety was 70% of the general fund. So I was expecting to see a higher number than 70%. So...
I think over time it'll ratchet up. We're hiring, you know, every year a few more officers at a time, but also as the pie grows, the percentage doesn't necessarily go incrementally.
Graham, but I also saw like recreation services went from 11.7 to 12, and library went from 6.1 to 6. So things were going up and down in the other ones, but not a dramatic difference.
And as Lars said, as the pie grows and varies, and you'll remember when we talked about the tax, and it's important to remember on this slide, this is only the operating portion of that tax. So the first...
Which is only the personnel.
Right. So it's only the first year, operations is a real small part of that tax. Most of that money is going to build facilities. 10 years from now, it's going to be mostly used for personnel, so then it will be a significant difference.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. And the next slide has numbers we can look at to see the changes, and that helps illustrate Okay, so here's the budget to budget comparison for the general fund expenditures, and I can walk through and explain the differences here in more detail. The general fund, oh, sorry, the general government category includes council, clerk, court, city manager, legal, budget and finance, those support functions that are in the general fund. The increase for that area is mainly for the COLA merit and some HR training that was Yeah, and then the community development line is operating increases. We have a one-time development code rewrite for 200,000, and we have a temporary position increase, operation study, and fee schedule consultant. So they're looking to study their fees and operations next year. I think when the city manager goes through his strategic plan portion, there'll be more detail on that. The economic development line is the largest increase as a percentage. So there's, there's two, sorry, there's one new position in this area, as well as quite a bit of services and supplies that are being budgeted. And again, Dallin, well, city manager will talk about that in a little bit to explain Recreation services, actually, let's not skip that far. So fire, we separate the fire and police departments into their, I would say, regular budgets and then their public safety tax budget. So you can see particularly how we're funding these nonadditional tax areas. I think it'll make it more clear for council and the public to see that the tax is definitely being dedicated to these areas. So fire is increasing a little bit in their, their non-public safety tax initiative area due to the cost of personnel. So their COLA and merit is mainly that increase. Library is increasing very minimally as well. Again, the same thing with police department, going up a bit from 17.1 to 17.5 million, and the public safety tax there is itemized separately for operational public safety Recreation services has quite a bit of maintenance budgeted for next year that's required or being requested. There's such things as a dog park turf replacement, fencing repair, Willow Creek ball field renovations, scoreboard replacements, and another park's turf replacement. So there's quite a few needs in the parks that are being budgeted under operations. These are things that we call one-time operating increases. So they'll happen next year, and then they won't have that same budget level next year. They'll have to request additional funds if needed.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Yeah, just for the public's perspective on the police and the fire, the base funding.
Yeah.
I went back and I compared it to what we talked about in the, all the public education presentations that we gave, and we said in the first year, we would, for fire, be at 13.8. As you can see here, it's 14. almost 1. And then in police, we said it was going to be 17.1, and it's 17.5. So kudos to not only delivering the expectation but beating the expectation, so people shouldn't be worried about letting the base funding degrade.
Yep, thank you for that. And I like that term to use, base funding. I'll use that going forward. So the total operations increasing 7.2% in the general fund. And then, again, we have the capital and contingency areas that we'll see some more detail on, but the public safety tax capital is in that, largely the increase between the 16.4 and the 38 million.
Councilman Moore.
Lars, just a quick question. With these numbers, and of course, it has the contingency down at the bottom, let's say in the next fiscal year, an unplanned opportunity becomes available to the city to purchase some open space, but we don't have it budgeted necessarily. In that scenario, where would those funds come if the city said, yeah, we really want to purchase that land?
Thank you, councilmember, for the question. Right, currently, the city doesn't have dedicated funding for open space, so that would be...
That's my concern. That's why the question.
Yeah, so the funds would have to, you know, come from the general funds unassigned future project category that we were looking at. The budget appropriation could come from something like this, a capital contingency line. So we could reappropriate through council action, budget to move forward with something like that if it was approved by council. Side note of that, of course, is that then it impacts, you know, as you're balancing priorities, available funding in the general fund. priorities, available funding in the general fund. So here's what the public safety tax initiative funding looks like for next fiscal year. Again, it's inside the general fund, but we wanted to report on it separately for some clarity. So we're expecting 22.3 million in tax revenue for that 0.95% increase. Then there's a proceeds from debt line. And the reason we need that is because a lot of projects are budgeted for next year that we don't have the tax revenue for yet. So we would then borrow to get those completed and then through that tax would pay off the loans, basically, the bonds that are issued. So 3.7 million in operations and 33.4 million in capital. At this point, I'd like to toggle over to, as Mark was showing, the transparency site to show the council and the public the monitoring, what open gov site that was built for this tax initiative. So to get there, again, you go to government. Scroll down to the data transparency.
Councilman Moore, did you have another question? Okay.
And then right there, the big red fire truck. We will be developing this site over time, but this is kind of the start. What it shows here is a description of what this tax initiative is, explains the funding sources, and then there's a chart here that tracks the revenues and expenditures that updates nightly for anything that's hitting our general ledger. So every night, this will update. It'll show operating expenditures so far, capital expenditures so far. And then there'll be a prior year's balance. So if we have accumulated a balance for the tax, it'll track it here as well.
If I could interrupt Lars, sorry. Just to clarify, now, the tax went into effect April 1st, so people have been collecting that tax. Those businesses need to report that tax in May. So they collected all of April. They do their reports in May by the 25th of May. So that's why you don't see any revenue received yet. The revenues in process, Department of Revenue will pay that to us throughout May as they get returns each week. So the entry won't be made till the first week or two of June, and then you will see it pop up on this site, what we actually received that first month. Just wanted to clarify because it is still zero there.
Thanks, Mark. And then as you scroll down, there's quite a bit of more information about what was presented to the public as the needs under the capital and operations. We have the plans detailed out, and they'll be tracking on these tables as well for what was spent compared to budget. Okay, so now we'll shift gears to the property tax levy. As we remember from the slide, it was 5% roughly of our general fund operating, general taxation revenues. We're proposing to increase the levy only for the amount necessary to cover the new construction on the tax rolls. So that would be about 37,000. So it would increase the levy to $2,304,514. The rate then would be going down because once that levy is set, it's divided by all the total assessed value in the city, and the rate is actually decreasing. We're not proposing at this time to increase the tax levy, but the maximum continues to increase even if you don't implement that. Yeah, the value is in the, well, there's a statutory requirement that caps us at a 2% increase every year. So that limit, levy limit will continue to ratchet up 2% a year, even if you don't necessarily take that increase. So what's, what we're saying here is roughly, what's the difference? 46,000 is available, no, it's 93,000. Between what we're proposing as the levy versus what the maximum allowed is, is about So how does that compare to previous years and to a neighboring jurisdiction who has a fire district? The city's portion of the tax on the $400,000 home would be 97,000 in the City of Prescott. If a home was in the central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority's taxing jurisdiction for that service, they'd be paying $1,167. We used last year's levy for them because we don't have the up-to-date amount, what the current, what they're proposing. So that stayed the same. So that covers the general fund overview. Is there any questions?
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Yeah, I have a question. Because our friends down at the state legislature are always keeping us on our toes and doing away with our income streams. So I love the fact, given we passed the property, the sales tax initiative, that we're not raising property taxes. But what do you all think about with the trigger of activity? Like, we just lost the rental tax. We've, you know, when might there come a time that we should, if we see one more big rental tax kind of thing, or a food tax thing? What's the trigger in your minds?
To use the property tax? And again, can you go back to the tape there? So again, council can use anytime they want. It's not significant. We have not taken it for the last two years. That's why there's $93,000 available. So next year, there'll be 125, following year, 150. So it's not like a huge amount that can offer much relief to the general fund. And that's because of the statutory changes that the legislature did to us many years ago now. In '06, I believe it was, the city had done this same thing where we didn't raise the levy, but our levy limit went up. We had almost the ability to double, collect, collect double what we were. But in '06, they passed legislation that if you haven't used your allowance, we're resetting it to last year's level. And then it went to a 2% increase. City was saving that in case it was needed for flood control projects or other projects that we didn't have a revenue stream for. But when, one session, we lost it all. So that's something to consider as we go forward. It's not a huge amount. Council might want to bring it on if they want to do a specific project that doesn't need a significant amount of funds.
Or would we be better if, if, if the food tax thing was to come about it next year? Would we be better going after increasing that 2% limit to what the counties and the fire districts have no limits in order to compensate?
You can't. The 2% is constitutional, statutory, statutory, I believe.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We would, could we go after the legislature to change the statutory?
I believe it would take a vote of the people of Arizona.
Oh, constitutional.
Yeah, they took it to a ballot in '06. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
I wasn't here in '06.
Yeah, they decided to take it to a vote, and that's a hard one not to get passed.
Yeah, I mean, we decided to go ahead and take that increase, and it, we got a lot of grief from it, even though it was very minimal when you applied it to typical homes.
And it is.
But I think there's a good case to be made for trying to balance the income coming from property tax versus sales tax. Because otherwise, we're totally dependent almost on TPT, and we don't have that property tax balance. So there's a case to be made by saying if we took the maximum on the property tax and we lowered the TPT to balance it, then we'd have revenue stream.
Yeah, but it's such a small amount, you couldn't really even lower it.
Yeah, lowering this TPT is like 0.005 or something like that, right?
And it is challenging because sales tax is so variable with economic conditions. And the only, you know, less variable portions of sales tax are like food tax and rental tax are the only pretty much definite ones. And of course, they are attacking both of those.
We won't talk much about the fee schedule, just to note it here that in the budget process, departments are, have been evaluating the cost of providing services, at least those services by, for which we collect a fee for. And the result of that is there's several departments proposing increases in user fees or service fees. This will come before you at the May 27 meeting, so we won't go into a lot of detail here. I just wanted to make sure the council and the public were aware of this. It'll come back for a full presentation on the 27th. There's proper public notices given, so on May 27th, it was, sorry, March 28th, the 60-day notice was posted on the website, and then a 15-day notice of intent was published on the website and social media. So it's, it's been spread publicly. Okay, on to the next section. Just to talk about some organizational changes in the budget as well as personnel requests. There's a few changes in the budget. Fleet maintenance is moved to public works. So as you recall, underneath recreation services, there was both facility maintenance and fleet maintenance. Now, fleet only is moving to public works and facilities remains under recreation. As I alluded to in the expenditure slide, why community development was increasing is now there's a new team that will be consolidated with community development. It's a private development team that was underneath public works, as well as the water resources division or staff will be moving underneath comdev. And the goal here is to provide a more consolidated combined permit center to centralize services for the residents and citizens. Okay, here is the list of personnel requests in the proposed budget. As we talked about, there were several positions requested by departments that unfortunately did not make it to the proposal to you. So we've gone through and tried to align the strategic plan, what's, you know, very necessary and that we're able to fund. So the economic development manager and communication manager in the city manager's department will be requested.
Yes, please.
Lars, what is the difference between a communications manager and what John Heine's currently doing? Just explain that to me.
I'll defer that over to the city manager.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the thought with the communications manager is to pull, as it, take the communications, we've got currently staff working on it and some contractors working on it. It's to consolidate all of that in a person that all, that then allows our economic development staff to focus on economic development and our communications staff to focus on communications and telling our story.
So which position will John have, communications or economic development?
John will be in economic development.
Okay, thank you.
And then we're adding a half-time or part-time, 0.5 full-time equivalent to the regional communications to help with software work they're doing there. Public Works is receiving the other five positions. There's two in streets, one in solid waste, and two in wastewater. So that's a total of seven and a half outside of this public safety tax initiative. The next slide details the list of public safety tax initiative positions. This is adding according to the plan. There would be six in fire and eight in police. So what does that bring us to in total is 600 and.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Yeah, I have a question going back to, you know, I'm not going to argue about public safety tax initiatives. The voters said yes, so that's that. But on the other funds with the five public works FTEs, you know, I get the striping operator. Everyone's complaining that we can't see lines and we're crossing into oncoming traffic. So I get this stuff. However, is this something that's going to affect? How do we pay for all of this? What budgets? Is this coming out of enterprise funds? Or is this going to affect the rate study that you're going to show us on the 27th? How do I think about these things?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So as you know, public works is primarily funded through enterprise funds. And when we perform our rate studies, we look at the need for additional personnel as we continue to grow and we hit certain milestones within our different enterprises, our work areas that we do. So wastewater and solid waste positions were funded in the rate funds for those particular areas of work. And as you know, the striping operator, that comes from the 1% sales tax. We currently do those, that work through a contract that we have with a local striper. Unfortunately, he's the only striper up here, and so he also works for other nearby communities as well as the county, private contractors. And so we have difficulty gaining as much of his time as we would like to have. And we've had a significant uptick in requests for traffic calming, which is primarily made up of signage and striping and things like that. And so in order to provide a higher level of customer service, we felt this was the best use of the city's money rather than paying a contractor.
Okay, so the money that we're giving contractors is coming in-house, in essence.
This year, we have some funds in the budget because it'll take us some time to procure the equipment. There are four, four substantial pieces of equipment we have to obtain in order to do striping. And then there are two personnel we'll need to hire. So we have some monies in the operating to get us through until we're ready to get that team going and rolling, probably about mid-year.
Thank you, Gwen. So we've been showing this, this trend of the total FTE count, full-time equivalent count over the last 20 years. I mean, we included 20 years, so we've been showing it over the last few years. And I wanted to point out that if you, if you look at this growth of the city's population in fiscal '07, so the first year on this bar chart, dividing the FTEs per the population of the city, we had 14 full-time equivalents per 1,000 residents. Now, with the proposal in FY '26 with 609 and a half, FTEs were at 12.7 full-time equivalents per 1,000 residents. So what's, what's happened over time is the city's population and demand for services has increased. And also with this downward trend depicts the recession that hit. Additionally, the city was, was dealing with the public safety unfunded liability that delayed the necessary positions that were kind of pent up, I guess. So if you look at when we started adding positions more significantly in 2001, from 2001 to now, there's about 100 new positions. 60 and a half of those are all public safety, so 60%. Without, and additionally, I should say, the last two years, we've had this dedicated tax initiative. We've added 26 positions with that dedicated tax only. So this current year in '25, we did the mid-year budget. We added 12 public safety positions. And then proposing in the '26, we're adding another 14. So without those, the total would be 583. All right, we'll shift gears over to the capital improvement program. So this is a. So this is a five-year plan the city puts together to really outline the infrastructure and large maintenance projects that are needed. It covers next year's budget and four additional years. This slide is contains a lot of detail, hard to read. We have 21 categories that we use to report on in this CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and we have a total of 168 different projects. So really, to understand what's inside here, the best approach would be to utilize the OpenGov software. So I'll show you that real quick for the benefit of the public. And Council, if you hadn't had a chance to look, so underneath current budget process where Mark was showing earlier, for this meeting, we have a link to the proposed capital If you click that, it'll open up the list of projects by department. So we outline current estimated spending in '25 for that project and then five years out. This FY 2031 is actually the future years column. We are unable to--
Here, Pro Tem can tell me a question.
Thank you. Lars, maybe you're going to cover this, but I was just curious, under the street preservation, rehab, maintenance, and street reconstruction, that drops so much every year. Why is that? What is the thought process behind that?
See if I can find that one.
We've got, starting out in 2026 and all the way to 2030, it really drops. What is the point of that since it seems like we're so far behind?
I'll ask the Public Works Director to assist me with that. But are we looking at this these two projects combined?
No, I'm looking at the capital improvement plan under, well, I'm looking at street reconstruction right now. You start off at 2026 at 3.7 million, then it drops down 27, 2027 to 1.2, and then down to 350.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Part of that, you're seeing a little bit higher numbers in the first two years because we have some carryover monies for bigger projects that require additional funding. We had been budgeting about 10 million in preservation and 4 million in reconstruction, but unfortunately, we've had a couple of things happen. One is we're not we're not getting $1 million a year from the residential rental tax anymore. So we lost $1 million a year there. And then we have some other projects that that have to be done. And unfortunately, this is where our pot of money sits, and so we had to borrow a little money from pavement preservation in order to make other projects happen. Projects like Wetstein, Stetson, these these project, these road projects cost so much money. You know, I don't know if you're familiar with Stetson, but we started Stetson here in May. When we first started designing it, we thought it would be like $1 million. It came in at like $2.2 million. So these street projects are just really expensive, and when we get into older neighborhoods, we find a whole lot of other things that are happening that we didn't know were happening, and the projects just get a little bigger. And so we did reduce for the five-year. We did reduce both pavement preservation and reconstruction by $1 million each over the remaining four years in the five-year plan.
So that loss on the rental tax is getting spread through the departments in certain departments, and that was your--
Well, the 1%--
Reduction.
The 1% tax funds the Street Maintenance Division within Public Works, and it also funds capital projects and street preservation.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's the only source for street projects.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a little disturbing. Like, I think we're going to need more money, not less, in that department.
Agreed.
Yeah, thank you.
So what's street circulation? I got the other two. I couldn't understand. These new streets?
No, no, street circulation is how we make traffic flow more efficiently. So Ian Mattingly, it's adding new traffic signals, planning and adding for new traffic control devices that can include four-way stops, traffic signals. It also includes the the signal timing program that we have going on, that we did up Willow Creek Road. We're doing another signal timing coordination project along Iron Springs Road across Whipple and down to Montezuma. And so it's those kinds of things where we can make traffic move more efficiently. Everything's expensive. Okay.
So as as you're exploring the capital plan, you could, if you want details on the write-up of what's behind this project, some description, where it's located. For example, if you look at street circulation and you're wondering what this intersection signalization program is, you can click on the Projects tab and find that project, click the hyperlink, and it'll it'll give you a description, justification, and funding for We hope to develop this over time and make it better with pictures and things like that. So the funding sources for our plan are summarized by by funding or fund type on this bar chart. You'll notice the enterprise funds, as expected, are the largest category here in orange. General fund typically would be much less, but because of our infrastructure needed with or being planned with the public safety tax, it's also a big portion. So the capital plan is $591 million over five years. It's a significant plan. If you add the future years column, that's 769 million. Future years is the way we're, what we identify as a project that's already in the five years. And to finish it out, we add the remainder of that cost into the plan. So you get a full picture when you're looking at a certain project. There are also some other key projects that are put in that future years column for the public's awareness. Okay, just I have just a few more slides, and then I get to hand it over to the City Manager. Just to summarize this capital plan, we put some highlights of what's in next year's budget. So these numbers here are only the 26 budget amounts. We picked the larger kind of projects underneath each department to list out here. So at Airport, there's our airport facility, AP West Ramp Rehabilitation, Airport Master Plan Update, Airport Pavement Preservation. We'll show the detail of the Public Safety Tax projects later, but also there's a few other items. Under Recreation Services, as we were talking a bit earlier, with the needs in the park, it's pretty significant in this year's budget. There's a field light renovation LED project being planned at Heritage Park. The Goldwater Road reconstruction, if you've ever driven that road, you know it's in dire need of that. There's a master plan being contemplated as well as completing the maintenance shop work. It was also in FY '25, so '26 is a continuation of that. They're also starting a phased-in approach to these other items. Playground replacements, so over the next few years, they'll be replacing some of that playground equipment as well as light poles that are in dire need of replacing. And pavement preservation are things that are on the park, for example, parking lots and things like that. In the library, there's a project on the third floor, excuse me, a third-floor remodeling, and that's being planned to use with impact fees. So they have a, the impact fees for library are historical, I should say, that we're no longer collect for them, but there's a balance that are that's remaining to be used. And we've been looking for applicable projects that we could apply that to. Okay, there's two slides on Public Works. I don't think I'll read through those. My voice is about done, so feel free to ask any questions if you have any from Public Works.
I have a question on the budget, overall budget, just rhetorical here. Is there a reason, and actually, I should probably ask Mark, that we don't plan and set aside some money for the eventual building of that pipeline out there? Do we, have we ever done that?
Which pipeline?
Well, let's just say the Big Chino. Shouldn't we set aside money for that every year?
That would have to be a council directive, a vote to set aside money. It would have legal questions related to the need for an election to even do that project. It would have to be included in rate studies to increase water fees, or how does council want to achieve that? Where do you want the money to come from? A GO bond? Do you want to do a bond election? I mean, there's a lot of questions on that. Staff doesn't have the ability just to like randomly decide to accumulate funds without direction from the policymakers, official direction, you know.
Was that ever just, I mean, you've been here for so long. Was it ever discussed way back when the contract was signed? I'm just curious.
Yes, it was, and it was in our capital plan in 2000 and something for, you know, we've been working on it since '01. We got the partnership in '03, I think, with Prescott Valley or '04, somewhere in there. And it was part of our capital plan up and and part of our impact fee collections until the state legislature changed impact fee rules, at which time the City Manager at the time felt that that we could not commit to starting that project within 15 years, so it did not meet the impact fee regulations. So he directed us to remove it from the capital plan, and Council agreed with that at the time that that happened. So like I say, there's a lot of decisions, a lot of legal questions, and again, the the project has tripled in price and all sorts of things since then, so.
I was just always curious about that, and you know, if we signed a contract, I'm just wondering why there wasn't a fund set up for that--
There was--
Way back.
At that time. But again, with the state legislature change, we had to change our impact fees, and the City Manager and the Council at that time did not feel that we would be building that project within 15 years, so it had to come out of the plan.
Thank you.
That's the final slide that I had for you today. From here, I'll send it over to City Manager to communicate how the strategic plan is connected to the budget.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Lars, and thank you to all the staff that worked on this process. I think just about every department, probably every department, was disappointed about something. And yet, over and over, I heard people say, yes, and I'm part of the team, and let's go. And I appreciate it. It was fantastic process. We have a really great team. And as you have questions about the budget moving forward or want to dive into something, feel free to ask those questions or or come in, and we can meet with you and dive in on any questions that you have. Of course, we manage to and we budget to our strategic plan, and so I would like to provide a little bit of an update, both on where we are and some of the things we'd like to do. As you know, we've updated our our mission statement and our vision statement, and we will see that reflected as we move forward here. Priorities are unchanged, right? Safety is number one, economic development number two, infrastructure is three, natural environment is four, and good governance five. When we look at public safety, you know, trying to implement 478 has been the big task of the last several months. We've made a lot of promises. Now we need to do what we've said we will do. We are well on the way to doing that. It's exciting to look and see the, starting to get another fire crew on on daytime shift, right, meeting the the busiest time for calls. That's that's unique to Prescott, that that's when the busiest time for calls is, but that is the busiest time. So awesome to see that shift getting to work. We're able to see with our police recruitment, we got some good news from the chief just this morning, that we think we've filled the non-478 positions, and we're moving into the 478 positions, starting to to hire some of those. I think we were going to have eight new officers in the next academy. There's more testing on Saturday. So progress that will help us with response times, help us to do what we said we would do.
Now, Mark, do we anticipate a budgeted surplus in in police and fire that we're going to be able to apply to the unfunded liability in PSPRS at the end of the fiscal year?
Yes, we do have some as we get closer to that, and when we send it in June, we will bring you that exact number that that we will be sending.
I think you'll recall from the members of the Council that we propose that as a way of backfilling some of the growing deficits. As I mentioned before, the PSPRS calculates about a 2.7% per year increase in salaries and benefits, so that if we increase more than that, we increase our liability. If we increase less than that, then it backfills a little bit too. So I think Mark's suggestion that we use any budgeted, unutilized surplus in that department to do the backfill, and then we can maintain our full funding status.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Council, for putting that in place. And just to clarify for Council and the public, this is not the 478 monies. This is the other tax money that's been allocated to the police or fire department. It's whichever one has a deficit. And again, you're right, Mayor, you know, is that too low? Is that too high? You know, obviously, if you just look at our COLA and merit, it's too low, but you also have to consider the impact of retirements and new hires, which fluctuate that percentage greatly. But we will bring you a final number on June 10.
And if it should happen that we ended up with excess funding for non-478 salaries and benefits, once we get to 100%, we just stop.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, and it'll fluctuate.
Yeah.
You know, that's the only guarantee we can give you is it's going to change.
And I I had another complaint today about not having sufficient striping on some of the new and renovated road projects. So I know I've been talking to the City Manager about this for quite a while, and knowing that we have to share a striping company's priorities with our neighboring communities and municipalities, we're constantly trying to convince them to do our striping instead of their striping, and they're saying, do our striping instead of Prescott's striping. So I think it's pretty clear that we probably need to bring this in-house, and that's why you saw that a striping technician being proposed as one of those FTE improvements. So we're probably going to have to make an investment of about $800,000 to be able to get the striping equipment, and then we can do our own striping as we need it, because that has been an ongoing complaint for a number of years now. Every time we realign the road and then we put over the, I don't know, what kind of black paint or something to paint over the previous stripe, then you get into the evening or you get into an area where you've got moisture on the road, you can't figure out where am I supposed to be? So it ends up being a possible public safety collision concern. So I think bringing that in-house makes a lot of sense.
All right, very good. I'll come back to 478 in just a second, but also in priority number one is some airport safety actions, and we're excited about some potential there with the runway, the ability to potentially shift the runway a little bit to the northeast. That's something that we're interested in combination with the extension idea that will help with safety for both, you know, the pilots, the airport, the neighbors, everybody. So good idea there that we're working on some some progress on actions around that that we'll be able to share here soon. we'll be able to share here soon. And then looking in the budget at the idea of a new master plan for the airport. It's been a number of years, at least five.
Six.
Six. And so time for an update, and that will give us a new opportunity to think both about the airport as it is and the safety around the airport as it is, but also future thoughts as we plan on, how do we pursue funding for those plans, right? How do we pursue funding for the runway that we've been talking about? How do we pursue funding for whatever else is in the future? The land for the tower and money for all of the land that's been purchased. And there's a lot of funding there, and the plan will help us as we pursue that funding.
And I do want to mention that when I had a chance to talk to Senator Kelly two weeks ago, I pitched the need for strengthening and lengthening the runway, not only for the benefits of our firefighting capability, being the primary firefighting airport in all of northern Arizona, but also the knowledge now that some of the smaller regional jets that have been the commercial service provider to our airport, those regional jets are not being made anymore. They're switching to a larger regional jet, and because of that, they're 33,000 pounds heavier than the jets that we have been using. So that's a secondary need to maintain our commercial air service in the future. But I think probably the most pressing need is being able to provide fully loaded, fire-retardant aircraft when they're dealing with wildfire fighting up in northern Arizona. So I've talked to Senator Kelly about that. I talked to Governor Hobbs about that today. And I met the Senator Gallegos', his local guy out at the Fort Whipple today, so I'm going to start bending his ear. So we'll keep pushing on it, and I think as long as we're persistent, and I hope to God we don't have to deal with a terrible wildfire where we lose structures and possibly even injuries and fatalities, we want to make sure that these funding sources realize that the time to do that is now and not try to fix it after the fact. Councilwoman Ferworth?
And I, this past week, had the opportunity to be in Washington, D.C., and I pitched the same topic about the airport to Andy Biggs, Paul Gosar, and also Abe Hamadeh. And all three of them were like, totally makes sense, we'll go work it, so.
So you must be reading my emails without reading my emails, because we just had a conversation this week about, with our lobbyists, about the congressmen representing districts beyond our own but who are impacted by the fire response from our airport, including some of those that you mentioned. And that being part of the strategy is getting them on board right away. So you knew what my email said without even having to relay it, so great. Fire station location and location for an evidence facility, we're working on those as quickly as we can. We think we've got some good sites identified. We're in negotiation with two of the properties. We hope we'll be able to share publicly where those are in the next month or so. We're moving forward on the RFP for the design anyway. We hope that we'll have that ready in the fall so that we'll be able to move, right? So there's a little bit of overlap there. Don't think it'll cause any problems. Allows us to, again, to move as quickly as we possibly can. Economic development is priority number two and an area where we can focus in the coming year. Couple of actions that Lars mentioned in the budget that I think will be helpful as we do that. Two positions, one being an economic development manager, so that between the economic development director and the economic development manager, they'll be able to focus, one, on business retention and expansion, right? Because you have businesses that are already here, and the most likely place to find a new business is a business that's here that's opening another location or that's expanding. And so we want to make sure we're continuing to focus on the people who are here and helping them to succeed and to thrive. And then the other, one of those two, can focus on business attraction, and that's traveling or reaching out beyond our community and trying to get new business here. The second position's the communication manager. Again, that just takes that responsibility out of economic development, allows them, economic development, to focus on economic development, and communications to focus on communications, and make sure that we're doing both well.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
I'm super excited about the communications manager. Even this past week, it showed we need to be more proactive, you know, on topics such as what we dealt with this week with the whiskey off-road and others. So the more we can be on our toes, the better off we'll be with public sentiment. So it's a good job.
I think it helps us on both areas to want to be doing both as well as we can. Couple other things here, just progress. We're excited about some of the state activities coming up in the coming year, one of them being a promotion of mountain biking, specifically targeted at Prescott, Sedona, and Flagstaff as the places in Arizona to come mountain biking. We're excited to be included in that now. Again, with the airport, great things happening out there. We've had a ribbon cutting recently at Cutter for their expansion. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at that. Partnership with Embry-Riddle is fantastic. They've got a lot of big plans. They've got a lot of big potential. We had a chance to go see their campus in Florida and some of the things they're doing there, including, I was excited about their research park, where they had, I think it was 21 or 22 businesses, from entrepreneurs all the way up to Boeing, located there, working with Embry-Riddle, working with the airport, creating new jobs, creating new investments in the community. It was exciting. One of the entrepreneurs was working on cybersecurity for aircraft navigation systems, and I had never thought of that as a problem, but I was immediately extremely grateful that somebody is working on that. And, you know, again, lobbying for apron improvements, runway improvements, these will all have economic development impacts as well as impacts to our fire response and all the other benefits that we talk about. Priority number three, infrastructure. We've talked about a number of those opportunities. One of the big ones being the striping. We've talked about that, bringing that in-house. Once we have that equipment paid for, I think it's also a savings, the contract versus the personnel. It's about $100,000 difference. So we'll recover our equipment cost hopefully in the first, you know, five to eight years, and then from there, we'll be saving year over year versus the cost of the contract. So helpful in multiple ways, and then the ability to use it much more will be helpful. We've talked about, you know, Streets Capital Plan, a bunch of projects there that were highlighted already, but continuing to improve. And watching the pavement condition index number, or trying to drive that, right? Trying to make that as good as we can make it with the available resources. Highlighting just one more project, the sidewalk improvement along Miller Valley Road. If you've been along Miller Valley Road and you've looked at the sidewalk, you'll realize that you can't... If you have something with wheels, if you're in a motorized wheelchair, if you're in anything like that, you can't take the sidewalk down Miller Valley Road. And that's one of our major roads. It's an $8 million project. To make that improvement, we'd like to find grant funding to help us do that project, but it is a major ADA concern that we have. Okay. To the natural environment, again, a bunch of things that we're watching, thinking about, working on. The Glassford Dells Gateway Park was listed as one of our projects for congressionally-directed spending and for legislative funding. We haven't heard back on either one, but it's on the list and one we're trying to fund so that we can take some action there. Bean Peaks continues to grow, right? The first section's open, but there's more to come, and we're excited to see that. The trail connectivity projects, especially through Simpo, there's projects to take the trails from all the different communities, connect them all together so that you can travel from PV to Prescott to Chino Valley on trails. You recently approved an agreement to extend the Peavine Trail up towards Chino. Continuing to work on those trail connectivity projects and working with Simpo on the wildlife corridor study, as Simpo would like to identify where those corridors might be, and we're involved in that process as well. Getting to the last priority, not in importance, but just in order of listing in the plan, is good governance, something we are very focused on, working on all the time. And a couple of things you'll see, one is in the budget. You may have noticed some updates to the performance measures. We'll continue working on those and refining those. The community-focused, performance-driven organization is a theme in the strategic plan, and you'll see two big things throughout the budget this year. One is the increase in training in certain areas to help us in that area, particularly in the transition area where, you know, if you work a job and you're good at the job, and then you get promoted to the next job, we don't necessarily provide all of the training we should provide for that promotion, for that all of a sudden you're supervising staff, or all of a sudden you've got some different responsibilities. And we have some opportunities for training there and some for some broader, more general training. And then just both understanding our organization and looking for efficiencies throughout IT, comdev, facilities. The facilities analysis, we hope to take that similar to the way we're doing the streets analysis. You saw the streets analysis in the last couple of months, and we looked at every street, and that's how we got to the pavement condition index. With a facilities study, we'll be able to look at all of our facilities, put a score or a grade on the roof and on the HVAC and on the different pieces of equipment associated with the building, and then come up with an FCI or a facilities condition index so that we can measure performance, and then start to be really strategic about, you know, hey, we need to do six new roofs this year, or that kind of thing, just the same way that we do streets. So that's exciting. And I'll back up a little bit with comdev. We're talking about structural, but especially the process. So process mapping, process improvement, want to make that as fantastic as we can make it. We know we've got a good team working on it now, but we'll bring in some folks to take a look at that with us. Similar with IT. IT's an internal service. It's an area we all need. It's an area we all rely on, and it's an opportunity for us to improve the whole organization as we get as efficient and effective as we can with our IT. The employee survey is something that we haven't done certainly on a regular basis in the past. I'm excited about that. We've got a lot of smart employees that will help us to identify things that we can do better and things that we're doing really well already. Timing on the employee surveys probably fall. See if everything in. And then again, additional analysis, long-term water management plan. The land development code update is also one I'm excited about, which is the opportunity to look at all of our codes and review where we are. I understand the county has just started this process. I believe they've had an RFP out, and they're just starting to select someone, so we have an opportunity to work at the same time as the county to make sure that, you know, we're each updating our codes for what fits our jurisdiction and we're aligned in the end so that it makes sense as you go from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. And then Open Gov, which you've seen demonstrated today, you'll see demonstrated some more as we get to the 28th. There's the, you know, the strategic plan update, a reminder of some of the dates. We have coming up, June 10th being the next meeting, public hearings on the 24th, and I'm going to kick it back to Lars for the approved expenditure list.
Here's a final note before we close up today. Attached to the agenda item, we included the proposed approved expenditure list. So this is, as you recall, it's a form of council authorization that's included in the procurement code. It's developed and adopted as part of our budget process, and items on that list are included... Items on that list do not need to come back to council then for individual approval after that procurement process is completed. So what we're asking you to do is review that approved expenditure list proposal and let the... Let us know on the June 10th meeting, so when we come back for the tentative, if there's anything that you would like to not be on that list and you'd rather it come back to you throughout the year. And then we'll adopt this at the same time as our final budget.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
I'm sorry, again, I'm going to claim newness. Remind me again, if it's on the AEL and you do, and we leave it there, but let's say the budget is $650,000, and through the procurement process, it comes in at 750 or 850, do you come back to, or is it just it's approved because we approved it right now?
Excellent question. Thank you. We have in the code, it's a 20% rule. So if the project comes in at 20% over what's on the list, then it would come back to you. Right, right. So there's a buffer there that allows for some flexibility.
Yeah, I've seen quite a few of the engineers' estimates, which primarily are retrospective looking, because they look at what a similar project had cost before. But we're finding, at least in the last year or so, that the actual bids are substantially above the engineer's estimate. So that's a real challenge to be able to put it on that list and then try to make sure we keep it within 20%. I think some of those construction materials are at least lowering their increased cost. I think we still have costs in rebar and some of the other metal requirements for construction. I think lumber has flattened pretty well, but I think concrete is still quite a bit higher. So that's a real challenge, especially trying to get a CMAR agreement. It'll be interesting to see how some of those necessary projects will be available to get a CMAR contract as next year proceeds.
Well, that's it. That's the end of the slide presentation. At this point, we take additional questions or comments and hope to see you then on the tentative budget adoption.
Thank you, Lars.
And again, if any council or public have more questions, please contact information there for Catherine in our office. We'll set up an appointment. We'll be glad to get together and go through it and hopefully answer all your questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Well, in that case, if we have no other concerns or comments from the council, then this meeting is adjourned.